Ask all those that are able to stand to please do so at this time. Thank you. Good evening.
Father, we come before you in the name of the Lord. We thank you for the city of Baldwin Park. Thank you for the mayor, city council members, the police department, the school district, the business district, and all of those that are working together to bring the city together and to be a prosperous city. Give them wisdom and knowledge and understanding in how to govern this city. And also, Lord, we look upon our military that is out there fighting for our freedom that we have, and also our school district, Lord, that put your hand upon our children, Lord God, that they will live a prosperous life, go on to college, Lord God. And also, I would like to lift up the Montenegro family and give them the peace of God that passes all understanding as they departed Anta Montenegro. In the name of the Lord, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. At this point, we're going to face the flag. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to say first of all, thank you and good evening to everyone that is here today. Before I go on, I just want to thank two families that are here. The Ramos Estrada from the state of Sonora. Gracias por estar aquí presentes. They're here with us. They're a beautiful family. They're related to our city treasurer, Maria Contreras, and they're with Al Contreras. So hopefully they enjoy. Y que se diviertan aquí en la ciudad. So I want to thank them for being here. I want to close on behalf and all of us, of course, Ana Montenegro, born 1930, served as the longest city treasurer in the city's history of Baldwin Park, 25 years. Former teacher, mother and a grandmother, and the wife of Monty Montenegro. And you have to say, if you don't know that particular family, then you really don't know Baldwin Park. They have been a part of the foundation and the history. And their history goes back to 1908. So I remember when I first met her was around 1992, when Fidel Vargas became the youngest Latino mayor, and she sat right over here. I knew she worked for the city, but I wasn't certain as to what capacity she served. I said hi to her, and she introduced herself as Anita Montenegro. And the first thing she asked me, do you speak Spanish? And I certainly do, as Montenegro. And what an awesome person, what a caring person, and what a compassionate individual she was. I remember when my mother passed away 13 years ago, she was one of the persons that comforted me. And it's amazing how you build that relationship with an individual. And what a person that carries so much. And she really will be missed by us. And of course, she attended just about every of our Veterans Day because her husband, a retired United States Marine Corps as well, Monty, and they've attended just about every graduation or a good portion up in Camp Pendleton when they have their graduation. So we'll definitely recognize her at the next Veterans Day because I think that's, we'll miss her from attending there. So on behalf of the city Baldwin Park, to our city treasurer who sat here for 25 years, our deepest condolences goes out to the Montenegros.
Mayor, I'd just like to share a few words. Thank you, Mayor. I had the opportunity to attend the funeral for Miss Montenegro there with her family. It was a wonderful service, wonderful mass that they had. The priest that offered the mass today did a, knew the family for very many years and said so many beautiful things about Mrs. Montenegro and her community service that she had here for so many years. Her daughter did a wonderful eulogy on her mother, talked about her mom. She was born actually on Park Street and a few houses down. And they had, you know, I think they've been married, how many years were they married? I'm sorry, like, how many?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight years. But together, actually?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five, that's right. I was going to say sixty-five married, but it's fifty-eight years married. And just, you know, she's a woman that I had an opportunity, when I first got on council, she was already here. And just was great to know her. She was a great person, somebody that just shared a lot of her experience and her thoughts with the community. I know my mother, when I was growing up, also, you know, almost everybody knew Mrs. Montenegro. My mother also worked with her in a lot of city issues that came about and a lot of, just through friendship that they knew their family. So it was just, we're going to be missing Mrs. Montenegro. She's a wonderful person, and we hope that our condolences and our prayers are with their family. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, council member, Susan Rubio.
Well, that tells you how much she loved this community. I didn't get to meet her on council, actually. She served with me in Sister Cities along with Marie Contreras and Al Contreras. And that's what she did. She participated pretty much in everything there is to participate. And she was such a caring individual. I know through Sister Cities, I got to know her. And just her kind heart and her willingness to help others was amazing. And so we also developed a friendship. And again, that's the type of family they are, Monty, the husband as well. And they're such a beautiful family. And my heart goes out to Monty, who also worked for the city of Baldwin Park and was out there every single day. So my condolences to them. And I know that she's also related to our council member up here, Cruz Baca. So again, she's out there and she was all over the place. But she was very well loved. And I really am going to miss her. Thank you.
Thank you very much, council member. Yes, Cruz Baca.
I would also like to say, and I think it's appropriate to do it here at the dais, my cousin, Ana Ranita Montenegro, got to see me elected. The first Baca to be serving on the council in 100 years. So I was glad to have her here at the swearing in. And she will be missed terribly. What a wonderful woman who led the road for Latino women, especially at our time that were struggling and a little confused as to whether we were going to take that road or not. She was there for us, guided us. We learned about our Mexican culture, even though we were here many generations. We made sure that we spoke Spanish and proud of where we came from or where our ancestors came from. So to Anita and the Montenegro family, Anita will be missed, but we will be there for you. Thank you. And I'd also like to remember Raul Ruli Braceda, a longtime police officer with the city of Irwindale, also longtime family with the city of Irwindale. He passed away a few weeks ago. His services were last week. And also wonderful, funny guy. He will be missed.
Wow. Awesome. Thank you. Council member, Monica Garcia.
I just want to just acknowledge that Ana Montenegro was such a sweet person every time I interacted with her. And just such a positive person. And I know Marina. I really don't know the rest of the family too well, but I do want to extend my condolences. I'm sure that it's a huge loss for them. She was a very special woman. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Oh, sorry about city treasurer, Maria Contreras.
I just want to say something also, that I met Mrs. Montenegro at Monsak. She was in my Spanish and in my French class. And then as time went by, we became friends because we both lived in Baldwin Park. And as she was elected city treasurer, she said, someday when I retire, I want you to take my seat. And she was the first one to sign my ballot. And I really miss her. I really respect her. And she's a little angel above you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I just want to also say, I'm glad you mentioned about the history because she shared a lot of her experience. And I remember one thing that hit me hard, which is not touched up in a lot of textbooks, was that the Latinos could not swim in the pool until Sunday, when it was time to drain out the actual pool. So yes, she definitely kept that history alive, which is important, part of the culture and the history of this particular region. All right. On that note, Madam City Clerk will, or city treasurer will take a roll call. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Council member Cruz Baca?
Present.
Council member Monica Garcia?
Here.
Council member Susan Rubio?
Present.
Mayor pretend Ricardo Pacheco?
Here.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Present. All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. All righty. At this point, we do have a presentation with the Arbor. Who has the actual?
She does. Mayor, before we do the presentation, I just want to invite everyone. We are going to have an Arbor Day celebration, an environmental fair, and that's going to be April 26 at 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in Morgan Park. And so we want to invite everyone to come and participate. It's always a fun event. And more importantly, it brings awareness to keeping our community green and safe and clean. Thank you.
Bring it up here. All right. Go ahead. We'll have you go ahead and read it. That's fine. The proclamation, we're going to have a council member, Susan Rubio, read it. Hey, Mark, you have a minute? All right. Yes, go ahead.
Okay. The Baldwin Park City Council proclamation proclaims Arbor Day, April 25, 2014. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the plants, plants and trees. And whereas a holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resources, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other woods products, whereas trees in our city increases property values, enhances the economic vitality of our business areas, and beautifies our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, Mr. Mayor Manuel Lozano, Mayor and council members from the city of Baldwin Park now proclaim April 25 as Arbor Day in the city of Baldwin Park and urge all citizens to celebrate and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, all citizens are urged to plant and care for trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. On behalf of the city of Baldwin Park, we proclaim Arbor Day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All righty.
Please, we do urge you to join us on Arbor Day. Please join us. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we, all right. I guess that's the only presentation that we have. Am I correct? So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public communication. Anyone wishing to speak, good evening. Before I open it up real quick, I want to acknowledge, I just saw him to my left, from the Upper San Gabriel Board of Directors, we have Mike Tuohy. Thanks, Mike, for being here. For those of you that may not know, Mike Tuohy, he's a former mayor of the city of West Covina and was the official tallest mayor in the whole United States as far as mayor. 6.5? 6.5? 6.8? Whoa, 6.8. Okay, good. All right. Thank you very much. All right. So at this point, public communication is now open.
Mayor, just real quickly, so at the same, let me just acknowledge our water board members, which is Al Contreras from the Valley County, as well as Margarita Vargas. Thank you for being here. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Paul Hernandez, is that you back there, Paul, with that hat? Oh, yeah. Cap. Okay.
Paul Hernandez. There you go. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you very much. All right. Got a lot of water people here. All right. So at this point, I will now open a public communication. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Angelique Hernandez, and I'm proud to be here on behalf of the office of State Senator Dr. Ed Hernandez. I'm the new city representative for the city of Baldwin Park, and it's a pleasure to be representing Baldwin Park. I'm a lifelong resident of Baldwin Park. I went to Santa Fe and Baldwin Park High School. So I definitely wanted to make some time today and come in and introduce myself.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. All right. Moving along with public communication.
Hello, council and Baldwin Park citizens. The city street sweeper has not showed up. I don't know what the big problem is. Got a lot of money. Let's buy one or do something. If you can't fix it, can't do work it, give me my money back. That's how simple it is. You can't do the job, give me my money back. I can put it in my pocket and use it just as efficient or better than you folks. You got a lot of money? If you have a lot of money, buy the darn thing. If not, give it out to a contractor. Let them clean it every week. That way you can make them pay you. But you know, what, three weeks, two weeks? You guys are missing too many days. I noticed that when Uncle Sam takes that out of my tax money, it ends up in Baldwin Park. Boom. Just as easy as you can take it out of my tax money, send it back to me. You don't need my money, give it back to me. And I'm pretty sure all these citizens behind me want the same thing. You can't produce, move on. That's the name of this city. You guys talk about progress? Well, let's put it all together and get it going. This street thing has been going on for almost two years. The other city manager didn't do anything. Now, last meeting I was here, the city manager was in for a raise. I don't know if he's still getting it or not, but if he can get a raise, you can give me my money back. That's how simple it is, guys, ladies. I mean, you don't have to be a college-educated person to know, if you don't pay the bill, somebody's going to come back and take it. Well, I want my money back. You're going to say, well, it ain't very much. I don't care what it is. I can clean my street a lot better than your street sweeper. You know why? Because I do it out there. I dirty it, I clean it. But I don't do that no more. You know why? Because it's your responsibility as city employees, as city managers, and so on and so on, to take care of that, make sure it gets done weekly, not whenever, wow, the machine broke down. It's not my fault. You only have one machine that works. I'm pretty sure when you guys don't get your $50 bonus, or, no, I'm sorry, your $50, or $25, or $40, or whatever it is, every time you come to a city council, you complain. Well, I'm complaining too, because I have the right to complain. So do you. My complaint is if you can't do the job, get somebody else to do it. And if they can't do it, give me my money back. That's how simple it is. Paying tax dollars, give it back to me. Uncle Sam loves my tax money. I hate giving it to him, but I pay it. So the same way you can collect it from the state, same way you can give it back. I know you're looking at me saying, well, you're wrong. You people got to think about that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Luna. I appreciate that. Thank you. All right. Good evening. Moi Long, whoever could come up here. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'd like to address the council on basically the same subject. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Pacheco for responding to my email and my communication with, on Monday. When I contacted the street sweeping department, Ms. Vicky Valdez, first of all, I left a message. I received no phone call back. So two or three hours later, I called again, spoke with two individuals from that department who told me that the street sweeper had been down since October. I asked, well, why was no notice sent out? No notice was sent out. I asked roughly the same questions that this gentleman just did. I sent an email to Ms. Valdez, which I forwarded Mr. Pacheco. He responded. She has yet to respond. I have the same question. If you're not going to sweep, at least let me know. It's been going on, according to these people, since October, every two weeks. Yesterday, the street sweeper came by my neighborhood. But my neighbor got a ticket because he didn't move his truck. Okay? That to me, kind of sort of smacks of entrapment. You know, lay low for a little while, don't sweep for a little while. When people get complacent and leave their truck out or their car out, bust them. That's the way I see it. If it's not going to be done, if my car breaks down or your car breaks down, thing to do is call into work and say, hey, I can't make it. That's common sense. It's common courtesy. If the street sweeper's not going to come by, some sort of notice. Other things, but we'll take that some other time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. We'll make comments at the end. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Moi Long.
Good evening. First complaint is the nature park, Walnut Creek. It looks like a jungle up there again. You guys haven't done anything to it. Steve, I saw him, and he went and cleaned out the sign on it, and that was about it. But the weeds are on three feet tall, you know. I know you guys are not taking care of barns right now because it's under construction. So all those man-hours that you guys were putting in at barns, how come you guys don't switch it around? You know, I know you guys are under staff on the maintenance department, but somebody needs to go up there and start seeing what each individual is doing. You guys have to do a time study on everything that's being done in the city, you know. I used to do it once a year with my company. There was no downtime, you know. So it's something that you guys have to look at, you know. Another thing is, when our police department, they're doing good, you know, there's still a little areas that we need to address. But I'll get with David and give him some information that I have, you know. But still, the police department has been going strong in my area. Another thing is on persons driving without no driver's license. I was here at the police department around two weeks ago. You get people that are second, third, you know, violators, you know. What do you guys expect? What do those people want? You know, when I got to my age to go drive, my parents told me, you want to drive, you go take a driver's license. I've been driving for 55 years, almost 60 years. Okay? I couldn't drive a car. My dad told me, no, you got to get your driver's license. When the insurance thing came up, we had to go get insurance. These people come to the United States, oh, no, I can drive. Come on. The cops are doing their job. Those roadblocks that the sheriff's department did on Temple and Cuscaña, you know, how come those people don't go over there and complain against the sheriff's department? They're just after Baldwin Park. Come on. Cops are doing here, they're doing their job, you know. I don't see a point of, I'm Catholic, why should a Catholic church get involved with something like this?
Mr. Reyes, your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moi Long with public communication. Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening. Greg Tuttle, business owner. I first want to thank Mr. Wall and Mr. Grace for dealing with me and talking to me and returning my phone calls properly and answering my questions that I had. When people do do things for the city and for me, I appreciate it, and I like to acknowledge that.
Thank you.
Now, moving on to, I made a statement at the last council meeting that I was at, that if people aren't going to produce, people are going to cause problems, I was going to out them. I was going to expose what they're doing and their problems. Well, we have one tonight, and that's the city attorney. Now, I had a request in for a public request, and it was to get the attorney's hours and the billing hours and what he billed for and how much. I get a blanked-out piece of paper with, starting from December 10th, 2013, at 12:31:13, I got 99.3 hours. It's $17,588 for December. I get this one, 188 hours in January, $32,952. Jesus, we might as well have another police lawsuit. This is ridiculous. I don't know how this man can work 188 hours. And furthermore, I want to know why we're paying, we must be paying some secretary time in here and office help, and we're paying $175 an hour for this. I know how to read attorney firm things. And then he blacks this out. Then I get an email from him that he doesn't have to tell me what he billed for. He doesn't have to do this. Well, he needs to understand one thing. Chain of command goes this way. The people voted the council into office. The council works for us. The council reviews his bill, which goes to the finance director, then through the different agencies of the directors to make sure that he did do his billing right. He needs to answer to the public, as much as he maybe doesn't want to. He better understand one thing. This is going to be exposed of what the billing hours are, why are we paying 175? I don't know how this man can work nine hours a day and do this. He might as well be a full-time employee. This is, this is pretty steep. We weren't getting this kind of billing from Pawnee. Pawnee sent me bills, and he itemized the stuff and showed the thing out. I don't need to know exactly what the case is about. I need to know what the man-hours are, and if it was for a council person, if it was for the police department. That's all I need to know. I don't need to know the case name. But I need to know why and how much and why we're paying this kind of money. We don't even have February and March's bill. Now, when I give a, get a public request, that's what I want to get done. And this kind of stuff is what caused this city lawsuits with this Paul Cook. It angered me. I'm ready to sue. This is not right.
Your time's up.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much. It's noted. All right. Moi Long with public communication. Okay. Al Contreras.
Mr. Mayor, member of the council, just a couple notes. First of all, I brought some families because this is their first time ever attending a council meeting, and I wanted them to understand the American system. So for that, the grandkids are kind of learning what we do here in the United States, because it's totally different than their government in Mexico. That was one thing. The other thing is, I'm also, we'll be inviting you guys as soon as we have our itinerary for our Baldwin Park Sister City Association, which will be June 11 through the 17. So once I get that together, and I'll give you a copy, hopefully you can join us. Last but not least, Marie Contreras and Berta, they're, I don't know if you guys have seen the Caesar Chavez movie. Their grandparents' house was used in the movie on the Caesar Chavez, as Caesar Chavez home in Cananea, Mexico. And it wasn't really Delano. It was more Cananea and Hermosillo in Sonora.
Wow.
Thank you very much, and have a great day.
Thank you, Al. Thank you. Thank you very much. Did any of the guests want to say anything? All right. All right. Thank you. Moi Long with public communication.
Good evening, city council and citizens of Baldwin Park. I'm Adrian Mendoza. I represent a company that's moving into Baldwin Park from Covina, which should be in maybe later this year. But I wanted to introduce us. We're called Stemsite, and we do an umbilical cord blood banking for the national cord blood inventory and for private banking. So we just wanted to say how excited we are to join the city of Baldwin Park and to be here later this year. So if you have any questions, I'll be here after the meeting, too.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right. So at this point, anyone else? Okay. Now, at this point, I will now declare the public communication closed. Let me, let me first of all, address one thing. The gentleman in the back, first of all, let me thank council member Ricardo Pacheco for transmitting the email back to you referencing the actual, the actual cleanup. So Mr. Wall, can you explain to us about the actual sweep? I know that's been a little controversial issue with us. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I didn't understand the controversy.
Can you address the actual, the actual sweeping? I guess the actual vehicle chaff has been out?
Yes. We originally had two street sweepers that were able to sweep every street within the city of Baldwin Park on a weekly basis. We have an older street sweeper. It's 15 years old. It's broken down. It's not very reliable. We have another sweeper that's eight years old, and from time to time, it is also broken down. We have received bids for purchasing a new sweeper at the direction of the council. We're looking into whether or not we are going to continue with our sweeping program in-house, or if we're going to go to an outside source to do street sweeping. We'll be bringing this item to the council for their, for their recommendation at the May 7 council meeting.
All right. Thank you. So yeah, let me finish addressing off the other one. I want to also bring up the fact that, oh, that it was gone. Sorry about that. Yes, Mr. Luna. Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Luna, just to let you know, that, yes, our acting CEO has instituted a program where all the employees are actually documenting the actual hours that they work and the location throughout the city, so that this way we have a much more precise area to be able to measure where they're actually working throughout the city. So just to let you know. And I know there was a third one. What was the third one? The third one, I think, was Mr. Tuttle referencing Freedom of Information Act, and that is a law. So we need to respect that and acknowledge that. So whatever data needs to get out there, we need to forward it to him. That's within the confines of the law. So that's been noted. All righty. So at this point, council member Ricardo Pacheco.
Mayor, yes, I just want to, you know, that I did speak to Mr. Gonzalo, who's there in the back. And Mr. Luna, your, both your concerns about the street sweeper has been echoed throughout the community. Yourselves have asked me about this personally, but I know a number of people have talked about the issues with our street sweeper. And I know that everybody understands, and I explained to him as Mr., our Public Works Director, Mr. Denwall, has explained that we're doing one, looking at, you're outsourcing it, looking at different types of contracts that could come in and do it, or buy them ourselves. That's going to come up here soon to decide as a council. But I think the main concern was, that really bothered everybody, was the fact that the city was continuing to ticket on the days that there was no street sweeping. And that was really bothered, not so much that the street didn't get swept, but the fact that we're ticketing. So I'm going to make a request here and the city attorney could take it to the proper channels, that for the time being, until we get our street sweeping organized, that we could suspend our ticketing program throughout, during the times that we're not scheduling to do street sweeping in the city. And if we could send out some type of a notice, maybe through the now or mail, I'm not sure how, but if the city could take a look at how that could be accomplished. I don't know if it takes ordinances or if it could be done through staff direction, through the city manager directing staff. If we could just get an email on how to accomplish that. I will be reporting to you back on the next meeting. Now, typically that request needs to be agendicized, so it'll have to come back in two weeks as to how that would unroll, and then the council would have to vote on it or the city attorney could give his direction how that direction is given. Good, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco. Councilmember Cruz Baca.
I think at the last council meeting two weeks ago, I did ask that there were concerns as well from some of the residents that had called me or had seen me, that they're concerned about the schedule. We really do need to post a schedule. It's like the gentleman said, sometimes we don't know when the sweeper's coming by. Is it this week or next week? So there is confusion. I think that the citations will help, but I think it will also help if we know when the sweeper is scheduled to come into our street. Okay, so if you could please do that, it would help. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Wall, I have one more question. Only because we've all had the same complaints and I did talk to the gentleman in charge of the sweeper and they were telling me without council direction, in a way, they were being very flexible with ticketing. Is that correct? For example, they were not going on the streets that were not being swept at that time?
Yes, I believe the complaint that we heard from the member of the public was that since they don't know when, what week the sweeper is coming, that when somebody parks and the sweeper comes by and they're ticketed on that day, that there's a feeling that that's an unfair action. And so we do have flexibility. The sweeper does coordinate with the parking enforcement person. And so we could coordinate a little better with them to make sure that that unfairness is occurring while we have our regular schedules.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to convey a little bit that they were trying to coordinate with code enforcement. So if the sweeper wasn't going on that day, code enforcement wasn't either. So they were being a little bit flexible with that, but better coordination would help. Thank you.
Yeah, and then part of it, the streets are pretty much, there's plenty of signage out there indicating as well, so.
Mayor.
Yes.
I think what it is, is it's the alternating weeks.
It confuses.
And so, yeah, it is confusing. I do have a question for Dan Wall. Who is it that cites the, you know, the cars that are there? Is it?
It's parking enforcement.
Parking enforcement, and that falls under what department?
The police department.
Okay, so, yeah, I guess it would be good to...
We do coordinate with the parking enforcement officer when the sweeper goes out. So we can, we'll talk with them.
Okay, and then I did want to mention that Dan Wall has been working to address these concerns and he did provide, you know, some very thorough reports and recommendations. And so the item will be coming to us on May 7th, as I understand. So I do want to acknowledge that Dan Wall has been working on this and thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so at this point, council members, have any other questions? Okay, if not, at this point, before we go on and open up the consent calendar, I just want to say, to announce, as required by a government code, section 54954.3, members of the city council are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the city council this evening. And each council member is paid an additional stipend of $30 for attending the Housing Authority and $50 for attending the Finance Authority. By law, we have to read that. Thank you, legal counsel. All right, so at this point, I'm going to go ahead and go into the consent calendar.
Mayor, I'd like to pull item number five.
Okay, number five.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, move approval for item 1 through 4, 6, 7, and 8.
I would like to pull number 6, please.
Oh, okay, number 6, hold on.
Okay, move approval for 1 through 4.
All right, thank you. I'll second. Any objections? See none, so move. At this point, Councilmember Monica Garcia requests to hire a technical firm to assist the city with the review of the draft environment impact report by the city of Irwindale for the material recovery facility and transfer station, MRF, located at the intersection of La Vaca Avenue and Arrow Highway. Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to point out that the attorney that we used in the past, the law firm, specialized in this area and they did such a great job in challenging the EIR, the environmental document that was produced by Irwindale. And so if we can really give a great consideration to that firm, I think that would be very smart, very strategic, only because they did such a great job in the past and only because this is such a specialized area. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. At this point, is there a motion to move for?
Mayor, I just want to make a comment on that. My understanding that the reason we did hire this firm is that they were the ones that originally dealt with that, I think, four or five years ago. And they were successful in deterring them from bringing the MRF in. So it is the same company and we particularly sought them out because they had history, they had knowledge, and we didn't have to start from the beginning. And it seems that right now, everything seems to be time-sensitive and we want to make sure we move on it. On a separate note, I wanted to just encourage all the residents who live on the north side to really look into this and understand what's happening. They're trying to bring a MRF into our, literally, our backyard. I'm one of the individuals that lives on the north side. I know we have schools there. We have the water tanks there. And it's not necessarily the best thing for our community. So once again, get informed, go to Irwindale. Please help us state, you know, your opposition to this. It's not something that we want close to home. And so, once again, that's why we are employing this company, to make sure that they help us defeat this project. Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for noting that. So at this point, we're going to, is there a motion for item number 5?
Sure, I'll move to approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any objections? See none, so move. Item number 6, requested by Councilmember Susan Rubio, the Board of Contract and Approval of Change Order for the Citywide Sidewalk Improvement Project. Councilmember.
Just really quickly, when I see the agenda, and that's what the audience will see on the website, usually it's not accompanied by the staff report. So I just wanted to note that the $200,000 that are being awarded at this time have no impact to the general fund. The funds will come from special, for Prop C, Mejorar, and other funds, but it will not have an impact on the general fund. So I just want to make it clear that the $200,000, we're not spending. It's actually money that's already there for those types of projects. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, we're going to go, at this point, a motion for item number 6?
I second.
And there's been a second. Any objections? See none, so move. All right, so at this point, we're going to go over to item number 7, which is the status of the city's Audit Committee. Consideration of Change in Committee Membership, Possible New Committee Members, Appointments, Possible Designation of Council Members to Observe the Professional Auditing Services Staff Interview. So at this point, who's handling this?
I am.
Who's I am?
In February, Councilmember Rubio asked about whether we had an audit committee and what the status of it was. In doing research, I found that in January of 2011, it was presented that the council needed to establish an audit committee, which they did. But at the time, they made the decision that the whole council would serve as the audit committee. So you can continue with that or you can appoint two of your members to serve on that and add a community member if you want. And then the other question is, we are doing a selection for potentially a new audit firm. And Councilmember Baca has indicated she would like to attend those interviews. And I've indicated, I have no problem with that. The only issue is that I can't have three council members show up at the same time without a Brown Act violation. So if the council would want to designate it, or at least understand if more than two of them are there, somebody's going to have to leave.
I would definitely like to be part of that interviewing process as well. And going back to the committee, I know that all of us are assigned to be part of that audit committee, but oftentimes we don't seem to get the information. So I really would prefer a specialized committee where we do invite someone from the community and even perhaps a business owner to participate. So there are meetings, dates, and times where we can actually go and talk about it and bring back information to the council. That's not always clear as a whole council. So if you can try and help set that up, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, it's really at this point what the council would like to do. I am open to any and all suggestions or direction.
So, go ahead. I was going to say, you need two people to join the committee, correct? Is that what?
You can have more than two council people.
Okay, all right, so at this point, I know that Councilmember Cruz Baca shows interest, also Councilmember Susan Rubio. So at this point, I mean, unless there's any objections to that.
And I would also like to, I agree with you. I think a community member that sort of has his ear to the community or her ear to the community, I think would be a very good idea to bring them on board as well. If we need some input from the residents, I think it would really help in coming to a conclusion about all of this.
Yeah, plus they also would be exposed to the level of what the outside firm does in terms of the audit process, because it is a very thorough process.
You know, I would also like to suggest, with that said, community members, it's difficult to select someone at random. So can we have something on the website, perhaps announcing if anybody's, you know, shows interest to please maybe send us their information and we can have everyone's information and select from there? At this point, like I said, I don't know how they would contact us. So I would prefer the website.
Real quick, legal counsel has information.
A point of information regarding the committee. I think it's important to note that even if you only have two council members, any standing committee or any ad hoc committee are subject to the Brown Act.
Well, it still would have to be noticed. Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. This makes it easier to be able to get them together and have a longer discussion than a lot of times with a full council. And then I think the city treasurer could be an ad hoc member by position.
Absolutely.
Thank you. That's what I was going to ask.
All right, okay, all right, then that's fine.
And then, do you want one community member?
Yes.
So I'm assuming that the motion would be to have the two council members that have indicated the treasurer is an ad hoc and then open it up for at least one community member, which would be selected at a later date.
Correct.
Right.
All right, yes.
I would only ask that the information that comes back from the ad hoc committees, that it be, you know, in the form of, let's say, reports or recommendations. But I would ask that, you know, there would be no filtering of information that then comes to the city council.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So at this point, we'll go ahead and make the motion. It was for Councilmember Cruz Baca, Councilmember Susan Rubio, that will be on this particular committee. So that's, I'll make that motion.
And the city treasurer?
And the city treasurer, excuse me, yes. So I'll make that motion.
And then one community member to be selected at a later date.
All right, so the total of four individuals. So, okay, I'll go ahead and make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, any objections? See none, so move. All right, we'll go to the next one, which is the Representation Appointment to the City's Health and Sustainability Advisory Committee. So who's handling this? Oh, Amy Harbin.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. As you are aware, the city was awarded approximately $300,000 Prop 84 grant to prepare a health and sustainability element for our general plan. The consultant has been working on all the background technical information. And so what we are looking for now is we are looking for a member of the council and an alternate to serve on the advisory committee for our general plan element. The advisory committee is going to meet approximately three times, which is quarterly throughout the remaining life of the project and is going to assist in developing and reviewing the foundation of the element, explore ideas to help the larger community understand the conditions and shaping the goals and policies for the new element. The committee is going to be comprised of council member, planning commissioner, recreation and community services commissioner, city staff, yours truly, local health partners and other organizations and businesses. The first meeting of this committee is scheduled for Monday, April 28th, in room 307 at 6:30, so.
Mayor, yes. So are we allowed to appoint at this, is the staff report allowing us to appoint at this point? So you're going to meet three times a year or a quarter?
We're going to meet quarterly, about approximately three times throughout the remainder of the duration.
Okay, all right. Mayor, I'd like to be on this committee.
All right, okay. Anyone else? This is basically just to me, the city's Health and Sustainability Advisory Committee.
Yeah, for the health and sustainability element, yes.
I guess I'll go on with Councilmember, Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco. All right, so at this point, unless no one else, I'll make a motion? Second? No.
Second?
Oh, wait a minute, yes, legal counsel, but we probably should have an alternate.
Oh, I'd like to nominate Susan Rubio. I know that it's very important to her, some of the trees and the lights and so forth.
Thank you. I'll definitely accept that. Yes, absolutely.
All right, thank you, it's an alternate. All right, thank you. So at this point, make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Any objections? See none, so move. All right, thank you very much. So at this point, unless council members have anything, oh, I do, because this is the ending part before we go into the next one. Just want to see if we could possibly, and I don't know who to get this towards, maybe our CEO, is see if we could get some of the homeless organizations that we, obviously, run through the CDBG. There's been an extensive amount of homeless individuals throughout the area. And I understand, I mean, I think the city's been very sensitive to that particular issue. Three times I've observed homeless persons almost get hit as you're exiting off the Ballpark Boulevard, as they're coming off the actual 10 freeway. Very dangerous. So if we could have the PD just simply ask them. I did see a CHP, actually, that I happened to stop and he actually went over there and told these two homeless individuals that were asking for money to get off that little median mile. So that kind of worked. I didn't see him out there today because the same person almost got hit three times by rushing in between the cars. So that's a big concern. So I don't know, we could gather some of the different organizations or see what potential options there are in housing some of them. And I know that Councilmember Monica Garcia has worked with one of the actual housing elements. However, we have to understand, some of these individuals will go in there and they'll be right back out in the street. And that's understandable, because some of them are dealing with mental issues or certain types of health problems, but they're back out again. So I don't know what we could plan, but if we could do something and let the city council know, we need to assist some of them, because it's a necessity and I think it's danger as well for them. Yes.
I will agree with you, you know, in particular, I know on Main and Olive, there's some, a person that sleeps on the bus stop and it's been there for months. And again, we try to be very sensitive, but they definitely need help and, you know, we need to do something about it. So I completely agree and we can get some information so we can pass out to whoever we see on the streets. That would be helpful.
Yeah, and part of it, just so the audience know, we pay into one of the programs through our CDBG money, Community Black Grant. So we need to at least utilize them. And I know they're out there as well, but somehow we need to get a group and let's try and see what we can do to be able to hopefully assist some of them.
Mayor.
Yes.
Excuse me, I attended a luncheon with Congresswoman at Politano last Friday, where she honored several women from our community. And there was an organization out of Azusa. I have the information. I don't have it with me today. But there is an organization that is very successful out of Azusa. And so I will give that to Chief Taylor, so that he can contact them in regards to helping homeless veterans.
Okay. And then also, want to see how we could address some of the code enforcement. I know that we're definitely out there enforcing it, because there are a lot of legal dwellings and what have you. However, some of them happen to be old type of cases, so they're coming up with major fines. And I could clearly tell you that at least three residents I'm dealing with that can't afford it. One's a handicap, the other person had financial strength, the other one got laid off. So let's see what we can do, and I'll direct it over to the CEO, the active CEO, see how we can work with some of these individuals that are having tough times. But at the same time, of course, I mean, we want to make sure that we beautify the city and I know that they've been doing a good job out there, so I don't want to discourage them. But of course, we'll have to check and see that they are individuals that are in need of assistance in that particular area. So, and I'll talk to you offline on that one about that, Mike, so.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Since you mentioned beautification, I would like to, and you also mentioned that median on Ramona near the 605. The city, we basically spent $75,000 to put this monument at that location. And it seems like the, what is it, the fountain?
Water fountain?
The waterfall, the fountain, the water feature.
Doesn't work.
Isn't working. And so I'd like to know why, because, you know, here we invest in beautification and we want our residents to follow suit, but we need to lead by example. And so, oh, go ahead.
I was going to say that the fountain does not run 24 hours a day. So in the evenings, it shuts off, I think at 8 o'clock, if I'm not mistaken. We recently did some rehabilitation work on it. It has been running, I'll go by this, well, I'll go by first thing tomorrow morning and see if it's operating at that time.
Okay, thank you.
And again, another thing, addressing that particular area there as well, Mike, the CEO, some of the homeless, because about three weeks ago, there was one out there who was kind of cleaning herself, using the water there, of course, right? But the thing is, again... But the thing is, again, the fact that they're on that medium, and, and, exactly, and that's, that's, that's my biggest concern, because the, the worst one I've seen is the one off as the south of Ballpark Boulevard, right across the street from Wendy's, that's, that could potentially be a tragedy. All right.
Mayor, can I say something?
Yes, absolutely.
As you're speaking of that exit there, it's always a big concern of mine. The fountain's very nice, and yes, I agree, it's off, I think it should stay on longer, because I go by there at 8:00, and I want to see it on, but also, that exit has always been a problem. It's always very dirty.
Yeah.
There's ugly bushes dried up everywhere, it, it gives the city a really bad aspect, and I know it's, it's the division between Almani and Baldwin Park, but I really think we should take more pride in making sure, I don't know who it belongs to, but it gives us a bad image, and I think we've brought this up many times, and it continues to be dirty, it continues to be with the brush growing, and in between that brush, a lot of trash gets stuck, so I really believe we need to look into that and make sure it stays clean at all times.
Maybe with this new sustainability committee, we're able to get some traction there, and use that to address, you know, some of the, some of those issues that you mentioned.
Thank you.
All right, yes, Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, with Caltrans, if, if public works, staff could take a look at Caltrans again, and if we could have a meeting with their, I guess it's the district director, we need to really emphasize and make it a point that, that the area in Baldwin Park is not being maintained well, and we need to bring it up. I know there's a lot of construction, but, but maybe with all those people out there, they need to be able to maintain, you know, the, the parts of the freeways that are along our, our areas, so I want to talk to them about that. Also, we, we have a, a yard which is behind Walmart at the end of Big Dalton, it's a city property that we own. I would like to see if staff could move what's there that you, that you store there, you know, there's, there's large dumpsters and those sorts of things, and move it to the yard that we have, which is off of Placientia Street, which is way on the north part of town, near, at the end of Merced and, and Walnut, kind of in that quadrant, we have a yard there that's, that's not used, and they have a lot of debris there, we could clean that up and move those storage bins to that part, I just think that it would make the city look cleaner, that we could maintain that, it's just a field that the city owns, and we could maintain it and not have dumpsters, because it doesn't look, you know, too, too clean out there, so we could clean that up. Also, if you could address, Dan, the, the, the nature park, as the resident brought up here, we need to make sure, get back to us on what the plan is to, to maintain that site, and if, if our safety police department could take a look at, to, there's a number of car thefts that are going on throughout the community, if we could work with residents to notify them to keep their cars locked, to keep valuables inside, so that it doesn't, you know, allow thieves to easily take the vehicles that are out there, and maybe look at our crime stats for these are occurring more often, so that we could take care of those problems. And also, would like to have, as you all know, those of you that are astronomers, we have the, the moon turned red this last week, so it's very interesting to, to see that. I actually got a call from a number of, couple of residents that told me that the moon was turning red, and the world was ending, and this was the end of the world, and so I, I ran out to look, and I called my local church, said, hey, is the world ending? And they said, no, absolutely not. I looked up at the moon, it turned red, no wolves came out or anything, but, you know, I found out, looked on the internet, and this is a natural occurrence, occurs, it's gonna happen, what happens every hundred years, but on this time, it's gonna happen four more times, six months apart, so we could have a, a red moon city event at Morgan Park with telescopes and all that, watching our moon. I think our Parks and Recreation Director will put that together, just to have some fun.
For when's that?
In six more months, they're gonna have another red moon.
Okay, gotta get Eric, Paul's neighbor.
Does he have a large telescope?
Big time, yes.
Well, bring him out, let's, let's get all the telescopes out there.
I'll let Eric know.
And do that, okay? All right, Mayor?
Yes, definitely.
That's it, thank you.
That fascinates me.
We'll drink red wine.
Mayor, just one more thing, and I'm sorry, Dan Wall is getting all these requests, but I know that there's been transition, I want to make sure that they know. The 99 cent store, at one point, we were fining them over and over again, because they were refusing to clean their, their area, and I went through there the other day, and it's still really filthy, and so I want to know, number one, what's the status of all the fines that we were trying to impose on them? Are they paying? Where are we in collections? And maybe Chief Taylor, you can also look into that. And I know they were at one point refusing to pay, and so that's kind of in limbo right now, so let's figure out how we can get them to clean that area, number one. Number two, they need to pay on those fines, that's important. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
I have a concern, another concern. We're very good, our graffiti department is excellent, I, I feel they're doing an excellent job keeping our walls, our streets, everything is really clean, you don't see graffiti any, anywhere. However, there are some business trucks, there's one, for example, that parks themselves on the corner of Garvey and Franciscoito by the old In-N-Out, that's, has a lot of graffiti on there, and I feel it kind of defeats the purpose that we're cleaning our walls and keeping the city clean, and then we have these businesses that have those big trucks that have graffiti all over them. There's also another truck that parks themselves on the corner, right around the corner where I live, on the corner of Foster and Ramona, it's from the Rapan Restaurant. That truck has graffiti all over. So again, it defeats the purpose that we're keeping the city clean, and now you have these businesses parking their truck on the streets, making it look like we have graffiti everywhere, so I don't know if that's, who takes care of that department, if we can address that, make sure that their trucks are not full of graffiti, so it doesn't look so ugly in our city, please.
And I'm glad you brought that up. Another thing, a resident called me up, Mike, CEO, see what we can do, there's been a lot of, a lot of rigs parked throughout Baldwin Park, so whatever we can do, referencing that, I guess one of them ended up blocking one of the residents' homes, and I don't know what happened, but I guess it turned out it was a neighbor, a big huge rig, so there was an issue there, so we do that. All right, so at this point.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I have a couple of things. Talk about collecting some of the fees. A few months ago, Mr. Wall and myself had had a meeting over at the yard with some of the public works, and I think it came to a consensus that there were a lot of fines that were out there for some of the business owners that had not paid the fines for the graffiti removal. There were some letters that were sent out, I don't know if there were any fines that were collected at that point, but I do think that we would send out a stronger message if the letters were sent out certified mail, so that that way they wouldn't say, we never got them. There are a lot of fines out there that need to be collected, that would also help our fund. So thank you, Mr. Wall, and I would appreciate that, I know we mentioned that a while back. And on another note that's totally different, it's just a request to see if there's any way that we could get Coach Gabe's name on the digital billboard. He's retiring or has retired, and it would be very nice to see his name after all the years of service to service to high school.
Absolutely.
Stephanie, thank you, Cruz, I, I appreciate you saying that, and I did miss the last meeting, and I worked very closely with Coach Gabriel, he was the, the coach at service to high school, and unfortunately, because of his illness, he has to retire, he's very young, yet he has to retire because he has to think of his health first.
Wow.
He's a product of Baldwin Park, he graduated from service to high school, and right out of high school, started practicing with the students as a volunteer at service to high school, and then went on to be a coach, and like Cruz said, if we can have his name out there, I think residents like him give our students a lot of opportunity, and, and let them see that there's a lot more out there in this world, and I, I really would appreciate it.
You know, let, let's invite him to the city council, present him a plaque.
We invited them with the wrestling team.
Right, he was here, but did we?